Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 8th, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting, Madison School District 2. Begin with a moment of silence.
Thank you. Now the pledge.
Yes, sir.
We will have much better pledge leaders after tonight, but I'll do it today. Stand to the flag first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. South Carolina flag? I pledge.
Pledge the flag, South Carolina. And pledge to the Palmetto State, love, loyalty, and faith.
Thank you.
At this point, we need to adopt the agenda. I have a motion that we adopt the agenda. Second. Motion in second, all favor. Agenda is adopted. Now we need to approve the minutes of the June 13th meeting, which everyone received a copy of. Have a motion.
So move. Second.
Second, Mr. Kraft. All in favor? Pass this again. School Board, welcome to students.
So what we were planning on doing this time, which may be easiest for the board, if it's okay with the board, we can kind of stand right here. We've got our welcome back signs for each. And then, Mr. Gilmer, you gonna take our picture? Is that all right, folks?
I would. We're getting them in.
As long as y'all say so.
Tim, take it from the waist up. Tell him he'll do this.
Man, that would go a long way around here. There's a lot of people that suspect that.
Hey, let me borrow my pen.
Thank you, Sam.
One of those. Thank you.
All right, next recognitions. We have any recognitions tonight?
No, sir, not since the last June board meeting.
All right, public participation. I believe we have one.
Hey, good evening. My name is Melanie Kyle, and I am the cafeteria manager at Belton-Honeypath High School. Tonight, I am coming here to ask the board to look at a policy and to possibly change that policy. It is the policy that is GCC, GDC, staff leaves and absences. I could not find the exact wording on this. It says, "An employee requests to take three or more consecutive days of personal leave during the school year. The employee must put the request in writing to the principal for approval, and the principal will consider requests for extenuating circumstances, and if approved, the principal will forward the request to the superintendent for approval." My situation was, my daughter is married to a military serviceman, and they are active duty. And Candace and Ben were stationed in Hawaii, and my first granddaughter by them was born, okay? And I wanted to go and spend some time with my daughter. This was her first child. I gave the request to Mr. McCall, and of course, it was approved. But at that time, I did not know that I would be docked for day three and following. I only could use my personal days for two days. And after that, I just kind of started questioning other people about, you know, had things like that happened to them, because I had never heard of that before. You know, I knew we get our 12 days, and we have also bank days, and at that time, I had 27 bank days, okay? Plus, I had my current days, you know, so I had plenty of days to take, but only could take two days. And then I was, of course, allowed to take the days, but I was docked and could not use my days that I had banked or my personal days for that time that I went to spend with my daughter. My friend Crystal is also here, and this happened to her this year. Her daughter had a destination wedding in Utah. And of course, a mother that's gonna put on a wedding for a daughter cannot just go two days and be able to put on a wedding for a daughter. And she had over 40 days banked and did not know that policy, of course. She, you know, sent the request in and was approved to take the days, but did not know that we could only be paid for the two days and then that we would be docked for the other days. I guess what I'm asking here tonight is for this to be maybe looked at and reconsidered, maybe up to five days, and that way you would include the weekends, and it would give you a full week to be with your family. Or maybe even no days, and it be up to Mr. McCall or whoever you're sending the request to, to determine, you know, if it was, like it says, extenuating circumstances, okay? I don't think that it would be fair to say, okay, I want to take a 10-day cruise. Can I have 10 days off? That's not what I'm asking. I'm just asking that there is life events that happens, and that I would, I know that my daughter is still in the military with her husband, and I know she's gonna have another child, okay? I know that's gonna happen. And right now, they're in England, so, you know, it's not just like I can get on a plane and be there in five minutes. So it's very hard to travel that far and just be gone two or three days. And of course, I wanted to spend time with my, you know, first grandbaby being born by my daughter. So that's what I'm asking tonight, is for the board to look at this policy and take in some consideration. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie, and we certainly will take that into consideration. Next, district budget amendment.
The, um, this board approved our 2223 budget on June 13th. And part of that budget approval was a 4% increase for all employees. And when we submitted that budget to you, the South Carolina legislature had not yet approved the budget for the state. So all the recommendations in that original budget were items that we could afford at that time. On June 15th, the legislature finished their budget. And because of that, we have an opportunity to revisit our budget, and that's the reason for the budget amendment here. The goal of this amendment is to recruit and retain our most effective administrators, teachers, and staff. Anderson, too, is not immune to the teacher shortage that the state's experiencing and the nation's experiencing. And, folks, every year, it is more of a competitive fight to get those most effective educators and leaders. And so what you're gonna hear in this presentation is our district being very intentional in positioning ourselves to get those most effective teachers and our support staff so that our kids can have the most, best possible educational experience that we can provide for them. That's the goal going into this budget amendment. So most of what you're gonna hear is making sure that our district can both recruit those teachers from other districts and straight out of college and retain the ones that we have. I think all of us have noticed over the last six or nine months, everything is more expensive, from gas to groceries to supplies. And I'll talk about a little bit of that in this presentation. But the goal of this amendment is to be able to recruit and retain the best adults for our children. If you go back to June 13th, during that approval process, we had a shortfall of $671,633. That was primarily due to unfunded mandates. The information we were getting from the Senate and the House were mandates that was being required from districts that were not being funded. A couple of those, and y'all remember this, was that districts were not allowed to decrease the percentage that they paid above the base teacher salary. At that time, they were going to raise teacher salary. One version had it $4,000, one version had it $2,000. And we didn't have to give that increase to our employees, but we could not decrease the percentage that we were paying to that base teacher salary. So if you increase the base teacher salary by $4,000, then you're required to increase that as well. There was also an 18.1% increase, the employer contribution increase to employee health insurance, and that was quite large. And so there were several mandates into the information we were getting that were unfunded that caused that shortfall. Also during that time, in order to kind of react to that shortfall, we went to our community and asked for a millage increase. We did not do that lightly. Another thing that we did is that we went line by line on our budgeted items. And in the 2122 budget, we had 18 positions in ESER in order to balance the budget last year. So we had 18 positions that were being paid out of ESER federal funds, which are non-recurring funds, which go away and must be spent by September 30th on 2024. We had 18 positions last year that were being paid out of that to balance the budget. During this budget season, when this board approved the June 13th budget, we had pulled in 12 of those 18 positions. And that was a lot of hard work from our principals and from our finance department. We asked our instructional coaches to go back into the classroom. We spent two principals meeting, going through our software purchases, all of our support expenditures. Anything that we could cut, we got as lean as possible, and that allowed us to bring 12 positions back in to our budget. And we were very grateful for the hard work that was done for that. The first time you make cuts like that, that's the easiest. So for these next two years, as we try to pull folks back in, and I'll be real clear about how many positions we need to pull back into the general budget, it becomes a little bit more difficult, because you've already made the big cuts. You've already moved the instructional coaches back into the classroom. You've already done those big, and to be honest, sometimes painful things you have to, to tighten your belt. So the next two years will be a little bit more difficult, but I'm not gonna bring anything to you that I do not believe we can afford. And just to remind us, the whole goal of this is to make sure the educational experience that our kids have in our schools is the highest quality that it can possibly be. So when the budget came out on June 15th, there was an actual increase in funding of $939,677. That was due mostly to the legislature increasing the funding they gave to students in career and technology classes, which we've got a huge portion of our students going to ACTC, so we benefited greatly from that. An increase in funding, they allocated to students with special needs. That includes occupational therapy, students who access those resources, and speech therapy. In addition to all of our special students who have special needs, they increased funding to that. And there was also an increased funding based on the poverty of your district. So when the budget was actually passed by legislatures on June 15th, we actually had an increase of funding of $939,677. And we have also experienced an increase in tax collection. So, and we've noticed this as you're driving down the road. Apparently, not apparently, but when the federal government just infuses the economy with so much money, we've experienced that people pay their taxes more consistently than they have in the past. And so that increased tax realization, and that's not unique to us. We, districts across the state have experienced a tax increase. So, and then our total increased recurring revenue is $1,174,677. And it's because of that increased revenue that we're bringing this amendment to you. What we're asking for and what's gonna be in this amendment, and we're gonna request the board to approve, is gonna be expenditures that we can afford, and we think in two years, it will not cause us to decrease class size. So there's two parts of this amendment. One, are critical elements. These are things that absolutely are very critical to us being able to provide a quality education for our students. On June 13th, the board approved a 4% increase for our employees. In order to stay competitive with our surrounding districts, I'm asking for an additional 6% increase, which would be a total 10% increase for our teachers. This keeps us competitive with the surrounding districts. It is not the lowest, and it's not the highest, but our teachers have done a phenomenal job this year, and we're very excited in October, when our scores are no longer encumbered, to be able to share with you the hard work our teachers have done, participating in PLCs, collaborating at a level. And the expectations have been very high. They've met every single week to identify students that need intervention and identifying the intervention for those students and creating a time during the day. And we haven't extended the day at all where they can get that student the intervention they need. And what assessment are you gonna use to identify whether that intervention was effective? And they did that relentlessly every single week, from kindergarten all the way through seniors. And our scores will bear that out, and we're very excited for you to see that. So this 10% increase is given to a group of teachers who have done their doggone dead level best, meeting the needs of our students. That would set Anderson, too, for a first-year teacher with a bachelor's degree at $44,352. We're also requesting an additional 50-cent salary schedule for our bus drivers, and that's to maintain a competitive balance. Goodness gracious, it seems like every month, somebody is increasing their bus driver salary just to be able to take bus drivers away from the surrounding districts. I am very grateful to say that we are one of only six districts in the state that has a fully-staffed bus department. And that is due to our loyal bus drivers and the leadership of Mr. Wallfeller of that department. But I think it is important to maintain, to stabilize that roster and make sure that we are competitive with our bus driver salary schedule. And in addition, just a increase of cost and services. Fuel has gotten more expensive. Custodial supplies have gotten exponentially more expensive. Increase in maintenance and labor. We've talked many times about projects, capital projects that we're doing, and the anticipated cost never meets what it actually costs. Supplies and services are more expensive. These critical elements will cost an additional two full-time educator's salary moved to ESER. So just to be clear, after we pulled out the 12 teachers that are now in the general budget, there's still six teachers that are in there, six teachers that we're gonna have to absorb into the budget. This will cost an additional two for a total of eight. I can stand right here being very confident we can do that in two years. It will not be easy, but in two years, with these eight positions, I do not anticipate we will need to increase class sizes significantly. I really do believe we can pull those back into the budget. The second part of the amendment is requesting an additional 2% increase for support staff, and that would be a 6% increase total from last fiscal year. That would include nurses, cafeteria staff, custodian, bookkeepers, maintenance. It would not include administration, but it would include everybody else who's not a certified teacher. I would love to be able to stand here and say that we can afford to give everybody a 10% increase, but we cannot. I would not be a very, I would not be a good steward of our community's funds, asking you to approve that, because I don't think we could, I know we could not absorb that back into the budget. But a 2% increase is something that we can manage. And our support staff people are absolutely critical to what we provide for our students. And a 6% increase is pretty significant. Historically, it's the greatest increase our support staff has gotten in the last 10 years. 10 years ago, we bought new accounting software, so we went back 10 years, and this is the greatest increase by far for our support staff. So I'm asking the board to consider an additional 2% increase for our support staff. This request would cost an additional 1.75 FTEs, which would be 9.8 FTEs altogether. We budget for one teacher when we do our budget prep. When Ms. Parnell does the budget prep, $80,000 per teacher. That includes the fringe. And so that would be $784,000 that over the next two years, we're gonna have to pull back into the general budget in order to maintain these increases. That will require some work, but I am confident we can do that. I would not bring anything to you that I didn't think that we could absorb back into the budget, and this is the limit of what I feel we could bring back into the budget. When I started this slide, I told you that I wish we could give all of our employees 10%. And what I'm gonna tell our support staff, next year, when we go back, if we can do better than this for them, then that'll be a top priority for us. But at this time, this is all that I feel is wise fiscally adding to our budget. So in short, the budget amendment request would include, the total budget would be $34,793,121, and it would include an increase in projected revenue, which is the additional tax money, an increase of 6% to teacher salary schedule, an increase of additional 2% for our support staff salary schedule, an increase in service and supplies, and then it would be allocating additional 3.8 FTEs, full-time educators to ESER federal funds. There's already six in there. And this would be allocating an additional 3.8 in order to fund these increases. And the bus driver salary schedule. Thank you, Ms. Parnell. What questions or discussion?
Any discussion, questions? Do I have a motion that we approve the amended budget items? Motion in the second. All in favor? Passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Johns, I do have one thing I would like to ask on the $784,000 that's still in, coming out of ESER.
Yes, sir.
What are some of the plans, like, I mean, you know, that we continue to gain the revenue? I know the $939 from the state we're counting on, staying the same. The tax increase, I would think, would be probably pretty stable.
Yes, sir. We're anticipating that both that revenue, Mr. Klink scales, and the additional, the tax revenue and the additional funding, that's recurring cost that we'll realize year after year. I think that's pretty stable. We're counting on an increase of pupils into our school. And then there's also just the natural attrition when you've got, and our veteran teachers are so good and so strong. But eventually, they want to spend more time with their grandchildren. So each season, you'll have six or seven retire, then inevitably, you're hiring a teacher with not as many years' experience. And that usually nets us a pretty significant amount. That alone would probably get as close to that $748,000 as we would need to.
Also, too, what about the fund balance?
Yes, sir. Currently, we're carrying, I believe, Ms. Parnell, 25% of our annual budget in our fund balance. One of the things, and that's a very healthy percentage, one of the things that allows us to do is without raising taxes at all for our community, we were able to take bonds to market to sell to be able to fund the new 4K wing in Honeypath, and that will not cost our taxpayers a dime, because that fund balance is so healthy, it allows us to borrow that money at such a small rate. I believe it was 2.8%. Most all other general obligation bonds are well over 3%. But because of our healthy fund balance, it allows us to do things like that, so we're able to build a new 4K wing to bring our kindergarten children back to Honeypath Elementary School, and it does not cost our taxpayers anything at all.
Yes, sir. I don't think that.
But that's good. I mean, that's good, though, right?
Yes, sir. The state requires, yes, sir, the state requires 16%, and we're well over that.
Right. I get that, but I'm just saying, we still want to make sure.
Yes, sir. Any overage or any, yes, we make sure it goes in there.
You know, it's our lifeline. I believe that, you know, our financial stability.
Absolutely.
Is our biggest strength.
Absolutely.
Especially a couple of years like we've had, but.
And financially, the last couple of years have been pretty strong, and we know historically that does not last. And a healthy fund balance gets you through those times so that you don't have to cut services to your children. Absolutely. You're exactly right.
Since I said all that, crazy. Thank, thank you, and thank, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
That's a heck of a thing. Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Next, Ms. Parnell, consent agenda.
Well, now that y'all have approved that amendment, these budget numbers will change for next month. But this is our revenue as of the end of July, and you can see, under the State Department section, you can see the EFA and the state aid to classrooms went to zero, and now we have this new education funding line where everything, all our new money from the state will be coming. Everything will be coming through that one line now instead of coming through multiple pots like it has been in the past. We've received almost 1.5 million in revenue so far this year. And then our expenses are on page three, and we are almost exactly where we are exactly, where we were this time last year, with 3.4% of the budget spent. Page 16 shows our cash as of the end of July, and we had 14.5 million in our various bank accounts. There it is, right there. And page 18, 19 shows where that plots as of, compared to the last two previous, the previous two fiscal years. But we've got a good bit more, but we've got to pay for the batting cages. We've got to pay for the flooring at BHP. We've got to pay for the drainage on the soccer and softball fields. So we've got some costly projects that are still yet to be paid, so that's why that balance is so much larger. And then you can see our pupil activity as of the end of June, it was 471,000. Our purchase order encumbrances as of July, the majority of them were just instructional supplies, teachers getting ready for the beginning of school. And then we did do a PO for some flooring replacement and an Agbarn at BHP. And then you can see all the detail for that. And page 30 shows our energy as of July, and the yellow is the current year. And you see, it's gone up a little bit compared to the last couple of years, but we did have a lot, a lot going on this summer. We had all the work going on at BHP, and then they were replacing the HVAC at Belton Middle and Marshall. So I feel like that probably caused a little bit of extra energy usage. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any question?
Do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Frank, you have a second? Gary, all in favor? Passes unanimous. All right, next, we have superintendent's report.
Start with Mr. McCall's COVID update?
COVID update is actually a recommendation. Last year, actually, the last two years, this board has approved a COVID paid leave of 10 days for our staff that have tested positive for COVID. COVID is, again, on its way back up, hopefully not a whole lot, but it is on its way back up. We've had three administrators this summer that's tested positive, and I got a teacher out right now that's tested positive. So I'm expecting us to continue to heighten COVID throughout the year. I would like to recommend extending COVID paid leave for 2223 school year based on not 10 days, but five days, because that is the new quarantine period, for all employees that have tested positive. But in doing so, you must submit a positive test result that is not a take-home test result, but that is done either through CVS, a pharmacy, or a medical institution. And we still, right now, close contacts do not have to stay out, so that takes care of those. We would not pay COVID. We would not pay COVID paid leave if you were living with someone who tested positive. It's just if you tested positive. So that's a recommendation that I would like to make to this board, to give five days this year for COVID paid leave. Last year, in '21, '22, we paid out 816 days. If you do that times a sub of $65 a day, that's $53,000. Now, we didn't have a sub for every 816 days, I'll tell you that. So a lot of that was covered by teachers, but you'd still get the impact of what a COVID paid day would look like as far as what it could cost the district over the course of the year. So that being said, that's my recommendation, our recommendation is to extend five days of COVID paid leave for '22, '23.
Any discussion? Do I have a recommendation?
I make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second, Ms. Knight, all in favor? Motion passes. School opening?
Just a quick update of our change times. All of our, we standardized the times for both of our secondary schools and our elementary schools. Our secondary schools, BHP, Belton Middle, Honey Path Middle, begin the day at 8 o'clock, and then our elementary and primary schools will begin at 7:45. Our secondary schools will end at 3:15, and then our elementary schools will end at 2:30. That's a minor adjustment. That will, the reason we made that change is to decrease time. Students are on buses, so that was the primary driver for that. We also have, we have early release Wednesdays for our high school. High school is one of those, it's kind of an anomaly in our district, but it's typical with most high schools. All the other schools, when, for example, the seventh graders go to their elective classes, they go to gym or art, it leaves those seventh-grade teachers altogether where they complain. In the high school, you never have an instance where all of your English teachers, you really never have an instance when all of your English one teachers together to have collaborative planning. So we really have, the expectation has been that our teachers work together to build common assessments, to identify students for intervention, to identify best practices. They will go through an assessment that they gave on Friday, and if one teacher had 80% of her kids pass and another teacher had 60% of her kids class, we're going to find out what that teacher did who had a higher percentage passage rate and adopt those best practices, or at least have that discussion. But there's no time in the day where the teachers who are teaching those common classes can have those important discussions. So we actually visited some schools in the area and in Georgia that are doing this, and we talked with our teachers about this. We talked with our parents in the spring and communicated this to our parents in the spring, so they've been well aware of this for about three and a half, four months. And on Wednesdays, we'll dismiss our students at 2:30. This will be a dismissal for students who are drivers or who are going to ride with a sibling. If a child is a bus rider or cannot leave, or a lot of our athletes are going to stay, between 2:30 and 3:15, we'll have study halls and enrichment times where they can meet in their clubs. So if students cannot leave at 2:30, there'll be time for them to get their homework complete or to participate in clubs that they would have to come before school or staff or school to be able to do. But that's going to be academic planning time for our teachers and tutoring, small group tutoring time for our students who are not able to leave. So that's a, and the feedback we have gotten from our teachers and from our parents has been very positive about this, given their teachers time to be able to plan and create assessments. So those are the start and dismissal times for the '22, '23 school year. Next, we have the adult or the facility update. A couple of things just to run the board through very quickly through our facility update. We replaced the HVAC system in Marshall Primary and then Belton Middle School. All of our rooms, now that teachers have come back, have air conditioning. There's some conduit, there's a punch list that still needs to be taken care of, some conduit that needs to be put up. There are two systems in BHP that we ordered those systems in May, and they came in yesterday morning, and we ordered them in May. And Mr. Hayes and his staff got those machines into the building today, and then we have a company come to do the install tomorrow. So all of our buildings will be taking care of HVAC system. Wright Elementary got an awning in the front of its school for their car riders, so they don't have to be in the weather when there's car riders. And then we, as Ms. Parnell mentioned, we did the drainage project for our softball field and our soccer field, so when it rains, that water will drain off pretty quickly, and we're in the process of completing our hitting facilities for softball and baseball. Those are our primary, our construction projects. We're wrapping up. The last thing would be, when you walk into the BHP auditorium entrance, which is probably one of the most visible facility areas that we have in our district, most folks who are not a part of our school, they'll see that before they'll see anything else. And for a lot of our folks who do not have children, they're in school, that and the football stadium is their primary interaction with our facilities. There was significant subfloor issues with that auditorium lobby room. It had settled, and we had tiles popping off. There were new ones every day. So we did demolition, and there's a terrazzo floor with a really nice-looking BHP logo right there when you walk in that's centered in the lobby. When our parents go in there for chorus events or theater events, that's complete. We did a repainting of the BHP gym, that is complete. We did a refinishing of both of our middle schools. It's been years since they've been refinished. It was not a completely taking it all down and repainting it. We just took off the top layer to wood and then put down a new surface. But we are beginning today refinishing the BHP gym as well, and that's going to be a full redesign where they're taking it down to the wood, they're going to do a more traditional with our school logos, design on the floor, and then put another cover back over it. And then we replaced all of the rollers and hardware in our bleachers. The actual bleachers are still in good shape, it's just the rollers and the tracking system underneath had fallen into disrepair and was tearing up the floor. So in the process, we didn't want to refinish a whole new floor to have it ruined by the bleachers, so we replaced that as well. The floor is the only thing that is still lacking, and we've been told that will be completed by August 16th, August 16th. There was one scrimmage game that our volleyball team had to move to an away scrimmage as opposed to a home scrimmage to be able to accommodate that, but that's the only adjustment we had to make. But that'll be ready well before we have competitions in the gym, so. And I think our kids are just going to love it. It's going to be very, very nice. And then finally, our meal price increase, our adult meal price, our adult meal price increase, excuse me, from breakfast, it goes from $3.76 to $3.80, and it goes to $4.81 to $4.85. There's two reasons for this. One is that food prices are increasing, and two, we don't want our cafeteria workers to have to deal with those pennies anymore. So we've just moved it up to a nice round nickel or dime. Really, it's for the, the food prices have absolutely gone through the roof, and so we had to accommodate some very small adult meal price increase, and we've already shared that with our staff. That's all I have, Mr. Oates, for our superintendent's report.
All right. Next, we need to go into executive session for personnel recommendations, resignations, and a legal update. I have a motion going to executive session. Second? All in favor? All right, there's no action taken during the executive session. Do we have any actions now or any recommendations now from executive session?
Make a motion that we approve the recommendations from Human Resources.
All right, have a motion, have a second? Second, all in favor? Motion carries unanimous. And that concludes our program tonight. Do I have a motion adjourned? So moved. So moved, second, third, and fourth and fifth. Thank you.